Good evening. We're right at 7 o'clock, so I'll call tonight's city council meeting to order. And Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hesnik.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
And Mayor Bain.
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of council, we have an agenda before you for the evening. I'll entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and our agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to address council on any topic of your choosing. And is there anybody for open forum this evening? And I can't read your handwriting. Is it David?
Yes.
David, if you would, join us at the podium, please.
Okay.
If you could start with your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name's David Nero. I live at 831 12th Avenue Southeast, Forest Lake.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome.
Hey, how are you guys doing tonight? So why we came, and there's a group of us here, we're all owners of the lot that you guys put a lift station on, lift station 3C. And we were wondering, we have some questions about that. Like, we'd like to see a copy of the easement. We'd also like to know why nobody was notified that you guys were going to go onto our property and make huge changes to it. I mean, to think the least you could have did, you guys known about it for years and haven't came and talked to us about it. So I think that would be it. We want to know the reasoning why you have increased size. And I realize you're planning out for 2040, but wasn't there any other options? It doesn't look like lift station 9C was upgraded, and there could have been an option. It's closer to the waste treatment center and all that. So there's other options, but none of that was discussed or none of those talked to us. They're doing stuff to our lot. We don't even know what they're doing. So that's part of it. And then it goes into what's the benefit for us? What's the cost to us? It's definitely probably not improving our value of our property. So, you know, so that's one of the things we're looking at. And then we'd like to know, and I think the watershed proposed it, but we'd also like to know who authorized it. Like I say, this is all, I think we should have been part of this planning and this change, and we weren't, none of us, not 10 of us were notified of this. So, and that's all, that's what I have, so.
I'm just, so thank you for coming and bringing the questions before. Is there a member of staff that maybe can kind of take the lead on getting some communication back? Dave, I see you nodding. Is that?
I'll talk with consulting engineers, too. They should have been contacting neighbors, too. So I'll talk with them and figure out where the link was broken there.
Okay. So we'll have Dave get back in touch with you. Could I have you on your way back? Could I have you just jot a phone number and maybe an email address also so we can get you some information?
Sure.
We're not able to do that tonight, but let's get you some information.
I didn't think you would. I thought we'd just get it started and start looking at, like I say, and then I'd like to see the easement, too, so that'll give me a little broader thing of what I can say. Did you guys overstep your bounds by, like I say, this thing's, you guys had about eight square feet, now you got about 80 square feet. So it's not a small change that you did to our property. It's quite a bit, so. Cool. And I think you want me to write it on that sheet?
Perfect. Yeah, if you could, just so we make sure we are able to get back in touch with you. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Also, so I don't, whoever was next on the list, if you'd like, also like to come forward and speak.
It was Karen.
It was Karen.
Oh, Karen.
And she was, oh, she did have a question.
Mayor, council, my name is Karen Moorhead. I live at 943 Southeast 12th Avenue. And I agree pretty much with my neighbor there for sure, because we've been chatting back and forth, wondering what's going on. I just wanted to add to that, that Bolton Bank was an absolute wonderful company to work with there, because they, as us, had no idea that that was an access lot. And because we were able to go down and tell them, they said, whoa, you know, Chad, maybe we can move this over here, maybe we can do over there. And so I went down tonight to look, and thanks to the maneuvering that they did, it didn't get destroyed. We would still have access through the lot. But what made us all upset and angry and confused was the fact that we hadn't been contacted at all. And so you have a little tiny box down there one day, and then you have a whole contraption thing coming the next. And I just, we all thought it was just better if we would have all been contacted. We could have been shown the plans. We could have been shown the reason. And it would have solved an awful lot of problems. So I'm hoping now if Dave gets back to some of us, that we'll be able to all come together on how, when, why. Because I've lived there for 48 years. The assessor was kind of funny. She said, you know, I'm having trouble finding information, because that was way back in the 70s. I said, wait a minute. I go way back to the 70s. I was living there at the time. So be careful how way back we go. So anyway, it'll be wonderful to have somebody help us to figure it all out. And just thank you for letting us come and bring the issue forward.
For sure. Thank you. So anyone else that would like to speak in open forum this evening? All right, with that, we will close open forum and bring the agenda back to council. Council, for your consideration tonight, our agenda items 6A through 6M. I'll entertain a motion or any changes.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agendas 6A through 6M.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and consent agenda is approved. Moving on to our regular agenda this evening, we have a single topic for regular agenda and a little more extensive workshop agenda. First item is Resolution 8142301, which is Ingersoll Pond's preliminary plat and final plat for PID. I'm going to not read the PID number. And Abby, I believe you're kicking us off for discussion this evening.
I am. Thank you, Mayor Bain. Members of the council, tonight before you is a request from John Peltier of Pelsole LLC. Mr. Peltier and Pelsole LLC is looking to plat the property that's shown. Karen, could you show my screen, please? Thank you. An undeveloped parcel on the east side of Ingersoll Avenue into a five-lot residential, rural residential subdivision. So the city council may have, remember seeing this one already in the past. It's gone through planning commission, so you saw it in May, planning commission the end of July, essentially this rural residential subdivision, which is located east of Harrow. It's not in the 2030 or the 2040 metro urban service area, our MUSA boundary area. So they are proposing kind of a larger lot residential subdivisions, which traditionally we don't really see a whole lot of, but we might end up seeing them on those fringe areas. Each of the lots that are being proposed, I'm just going to show that final plat that's being proposed. There's those five lots. The kind of better map to kind of show is still the preliminary plat. That's already been approved. We're considering the final plat. The lines don't change, but it kind of gives you a better idea of the property itself. Is five-acre minimum our lots will all each be on their own individual well and septic? There's no public improvements proposed. So Ingersoll Avenue is already developed. The city is looking at some land to be dedicated along Ingersoll Avenue for any future expansion needs through that area. Parkland dedication, this isn't an area that's guided for parkland in any way, so we are recommending a fee in lieu of parkland dedication. There, the one challenge that we do have is this is an area, Ingersoll is an area where we would like to see a future trail because of the topography, the natural resources in the area. Getting a trail through here right now, we don't really want to just create that trail segment. We don't know which side of the road it's on. We're doing our best to get as much right-of-way as we can without impeding in those natural resources. But it is one of those kind of long-term things we'll maybe have to look at in the future of how that trail comes through Ingersoll. Comments were received by the engineer in Watershed District. They really do surround around grading, stormwater. The applicant is working extensively with the Watershed District to comply with their rules. We did hold a neighborhood meeting. That was prior to the preliminary plat. There were eight residents at that neighborhood meeting. I don't actually recall anybody showing up at the preliminary plat hearing with the city council or at the planning commission level. Overall, the neighborhood's very much in favor of this. It fits the character of the neighborhood. So we have find that it conforms to the standards and the zoning code, the comprehensive plan. It's a consistent development with the neighborhood and won't have any adverse impact, and therefore staff recommends conditional approval. There's 12 conditions outlined, and we're recommending you approve Resolution 08142301, which encompasses those conditions of approval, and approves the final plat. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Abby. Council, questions for Abby?
I remember the preliminary discussions we had on this, lots of wetlands and things involved there.
Looks like a great, a great project. One of the, one of the questions that came up, I think, in noting related to resident concerns was around parking on Ingersoll. What is, what is our answer on that concern? Is it not allowed, or?
I would have to defer to Ryan and Dave. There will be ample room on these private properties. There's a very large lot, long driveway properties that parking should be able to be accommodated wholly on those properties.
And no, I have, I have no concerns if that's, if that's the case. Any other questions, comments?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 08-14-02, excuse me, let me start over. Resolution 08-14-23-01, Ingersoll Pond's preliminary plat and final plat for the PID, with noting the 12 conditions that go along with it. I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. Thank you. Good luck with your continued project. Okay. Next item, we're moving into a working session. We have three topics for a working session of council. It's going to be a little more informal portion of our meeting. Anything that we talk about in the, on this workshop format will, that requires council action will come back before council in our regular agenda for official vote. This is just some working sessions on three individual topics, starting, and Kevin's going to give us an update of quarterly update through the second quarter. Kevin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. And council members, including your packet is a second quarter budget update for 2023 for the general fund, and then the three enterprise funds of the city, which are the water, sewer, and surface water management fund. With that, it's also just a memo in there that highlights the revenues and expenditures, expenses for those four funds. So I'll be going over some high points, kind of looking at why doing these budget updates are important, not only for the mayor and city council, but also important for staff as well as we move forward into the latter half of 2023 and looking forward into 2024. So why are quarterly, looking at these budgets, looking at the current year budget's important? Well, it first allows us to adjust for the rest of the year if needed. When we're, when we put together the 2023 budget, a lot of assumptions were made where, for example, fuel prices are going, electrical costs are going to go, even things as far as inflation, where we've been with the past few years. So it's really important to take a look at those and see where, where things are lining up. And what I mean by adjust is if, for example, there's a certain expenditure category that's over for some various reason, you know, fuel prices really skyrocketing more than anticipated, is there other areas that the city could possibly withhold to stay within budget? So that's where, just looking at it and possibly adjusting if needed. It also really is an important factor in looking at the next year's budget, which in this case, 2024. It looks at trends of where fuel's going, utilities are going, repairs and maintenance as far as vehicles, if those are trending upwards or downwards. What inflation has been doing since basically a year ago set our 2023 budget, are there trends that we can help build into our 2024 budget as we move forward so we can be more proactive in responding to those and not so reactionary when, if we're just looking at this come year end, when we complete our audit? Also, first, we're take a look at the general fund. There's some main talking points with that. The main source of revenue in the general fund is that property tax levy. The city is able to request in advance of that tax levy, with that being received at the later part of June, with the remaining first half payment being received in early July. This really brings to light the importance of having that, of our general fund balance policy at 50%, as the majority of that revenue in the general fund comes from that property tax levy. We need that 50% fund balance carryover from the prior year in order to help fund the general fund operations until that first half payment comes in. Looking at expenditures, being halfway through the year, a good starting point is looking at, the budget should be about 50% of, of the 2023 budget. And in this case, we're just right around 45%. So looking at that, right in line with where expectations are, it's also useful to look at where, where were we last year at this point? Because different departments do have seasonal uses. Some spend their budgets more towards the first half of the year, some more in the summer, and some more in the fall. So taking a look at that is also very, also useful when looking at that, when analyzing where we're at for this year. Just want to point out, the major portion of the general fund budget is in personnel services. That makes up about 70% of the general fund budget, and that is right in line with our budget expectations as well. Jumping to the surface water management fund, there are four quarterly billings as we relate to this, and then one also annual billing related to surface water management fee. That is related to properties in the city that have well water and sewer septic, so they only get billed the surface water management fee. Those have historically been sent out, invoices been sent out in July of every year. So this second quarterly billing is prorated to reflect half that billing for the first half of the year, just for, just for budget, just analyze this accordingly. So if you look at that, you can see that the surface water management revenues are about 55% of the 2023 budget, so they are in line with expectations and projecting forward well. The expenditures in the surface management fund are about 22 and 1/2%. That is, that is down from what we would normally expect, because upon cleaning, fees and projects have come in under budget from where those have been. With talking with Dave, these are some of the smaller ponds that we are taking care of. So looking forward into the future years, this budget line item will increase and be meeting more of those budget expectations. The water, the water fund, the revenues are about 44% of the 2023 budget. Historically, the third quarter billing has been the largest billing of this, because greatly depends on the water usage that our residents are using. With all the conservation efforts and rebates out there, you, it does fluctuate from year to year. So it's one of those things where even though there might be a rate increase, if the uses is down, that rate increase is offsetting that decrease in usage. Also, considering how much rain the city gets from year to year is also important when looking at this fund. But when we're looking at what was budgeted for '23 and where we're projecting, we're looking at being in line with where that '23 budget is at. And this real quick on the expenditures, when we look at where the operating and administrative expenditures are with the budget, they're right in line with expectations, just both being below 50% of the total 2023 budget. Lastly, is the sewer fund. The revenues are projecting, again, to be right in line with what we put in for 2023. One thing to note when looking at this revenue is there was 1.7 million for state grant money that was budgeted to be received in 2022. That is being received in 2023. So we will be seeing 1.7 million coming in for those projects as money is being spent. So that is skewing the numbers slightly. When you look at it, that we're at 70% of total budget revenue, but when we take that out, when we take that revenue out, the revenues are right in line with where the expectation would be. And the same holds true for the expenditures, just like the water fund, right around 45% of those 2023 budget numbers. So projecting and right in line with where we would see those being. So I know that was a pretty high-level overview. There's a lot of details, line-by-line item, included in your packet, some more details in the memo. If there's any questions that you specifically had on any of those funds, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Thank you, Kevin. Timely update as we get closer to 2024 budget discussions. Always good to do a check-in on where we are so far from a current year perspective. Council, any specific questions that you might have on any of either Kevin's presentation or the materials in the packet? I don't have any. You're not looking, we don't need any official action tonight. This kind of sets the stage for budget conversations coming up, so good to do a check-in. But any other questions or follow-ups? All right. Thank you, Kevin. We can transition to our next agenda item, which is an update on hiring a code enforcement officer. And Patrick?
Yes, we talked a lot about the hiring, when, if, how code enforcement didn't last, well, most of the year, actually, and a little before that, recently asked to bring this forward, to ask the council if they want to accelerate the hiring of this position to this year. Being that we have a number of problem properties, and we've been talking about administrative ticketing and so forth, is it, is it a wise time if, if the council believes they're going to put it in the 2024 budget, should we accelerate the hiring for, in 2023? Practically, if we were to accelerate the hiring, we probably wouldn't see anybody onboard until around October 1st. One of the problems with October 1st is things start settling down a little bit, the winter comes, but that doesn't mean there's, still aren't plenty of properties and situations where a code enforcement officer or zoning code enforcement officer as well would be fully engaged and fully busy with enforcement. We do have some while to go before we institute administrative ticketing, get those ordinance changes, but that still doesn't mean we can't move forward with some enforcement issues and sending out letters, visiting properties and so forth, taking pictures. If the council was interested in that, it would cost about $24,000 for the remainder of the year, starting October 1st. We do have some salary savings in administrative department with the assistant administrator leaving, so, and as the half-year check-in showed that we're doing well with our revenues and expenditures on target. So I wouldn't be too concerned about hiring a position like this and having it have a major impact on the '23 budget results. So I ask for the council decision whether, or discussion whether they want to move forward, if they want to direct us to post this job and ask for recruits and hire by October 1st.
Council feedback, thoughts?
I have a question, if you don't mind. Patrick, would this person, whoever it happens to be, have more than one hat?
I think this person to start off would have a lot of more than one hat. There's plenty of bad yards, but there's also zoning issues and things like that. We're looking at also what to do with the airport on a regular basis, as far as not so much the airport commission, but the airport property itself. They may have a part of that, or there may be another position. That's still in the preliminary discussion. But mostly, this would be the crappy yards that we see and some of the zoning enforcement issues, and basically as well, the neighbor-to-neighbor issues, which we have all the time. Even, even though there's not much we can do with them, we still have to take those calls and try to basically be a mediator sometimes. So they would have a lot of different duties from not only, you know, planning and zoning would be one, some building inspection, obviously, with those complaints, and just, like I said, some neighbor problems that, you know, the police don't need to get involved with. Sometimes they do, but, you know, I did this to your yard, you did this to my yard, you, you know, your water's going on my yard, kind of thing. So they'd be plenty busy. And again, just to reiterate, what we spoke about when we've been talking about this is would not be, at least initially, and probably for quite a while, a aggressive enforcement. We've got plenty of people to call us, plenty of complaints come in through our website that would keep a position busy for a long time before we would actually ever get to some kind of a sequenced inspection. And I don't see that in the near future, anyway, so.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to make one comment. I, I've made it no secret that I kind of resisted this type of thing for a long time, but after this summer, I, I'm absolutely convinced that we need somebody onboard to do that. And it's, we've got some real issues in the city that, I don't know how we're gonna, how much pressure you can put on people or whatever, but there's some things that need to be fixed. And I hope that this position would help, help with that. So right now, I'm totally onboard with the idea that we should be advertising to find somebody.
Yeah, and I think the important part is if we started advertising, you know, we probably should write a job description on fairly quickly. I think actually we might have one already. But just to post it and get it interviewed process, you know, this is almost mid of August, so you talk about posting, and then September interviews, and October 1st to onboard that person. And in the meantime, we would bring forward more ordinances and so forth to strengthen code enforcement, strengthen all that administrative ticketing, things that we've discussed in this venue before.
So to be clear, without that in place, this position would be more around communication, education, responding to complaints rather than, because we haven't given them the administrative tools to?
Absolutely correct. We, if we don't have those tools in place, yes, we would have somebody that could take the complaints and manage those complaints, which is still going to be a large part of the job and still will be the part of the job. But it would be writing letters, trying to get them to comply, and then getting the police to go out there and visit with them to write tickets if that's necessary, and then going through the court process, as opposed to getting the other ordinances in place and administrative ticketing in place. Hiring this position may accelerate that process as far as administrative ticketing goes, but I, I think we'd have to work in tandem to, to do that.
Go ahead. Anybody comments?
So just being on the personnel committee, I might have a little bit more information with the rest of the council has, but, you know, there's going to be quite a number of asks coming to us in the next month and a half on staffing. I still believe that this is an important piece of it and needs to be done. The fact that we don't have everything in line with the administrative piece of it, I think it's just a bit premature to hire anyone right now, and we don't know what the full ask for the '24 budget's going to be. Again, I believe that long-term, this is something that the city needs to do. I'd be more comfortable with learning that full picture before I make a decision on hiring a, this position.
And just to comment on that, you will get that full picture next Monday. So that's, that's when you'll see the proposed 2024 budget and some of the asks that staff believe are important to continue, and this will be one of them. To be quite honest with you, this is already in, going to be in the request list.
You mentioned in the opening comments something about the airport. Is this intended to be an airport manager hat then as well?
I don't think we need an airport manager. I think we need somebody to coordinate things that go wrong in the airport and with Dave and things. I wouldn't call him a manager, but I would call him coordinator. I'd call him something. You know, when the gas pump goes bad, somebody's got to call the gas pump. When something goes, I mean, it's, it's really not a manager, per se.
I'm just thinking, I mean, the hat that Dan wore, is this?
Yeah, but not, not the, not the airport commission hat, but the other side of it. Yeah, uh, but not, not the, not the airport commission hat, but the other side of it.
You need somebody, you need somebody that's in the office that can file notums, for instance, especially in the wintertime, that kind of thing. And that's what Dan was really good at and uh, yeah, notifying uh every day virtually.
Yeah, those duties would either fall here or there's another position that we're going to request that may take those instead. We haven't decided where that's going to fall yet, but we'll know, we'll let you know next Monday.
So I have no doubt that this position ranks high on the needs list, um, but Council Member Roberts' point, um, we have a lot coming at us in this next budget session and so us starting down this path puts this particular position ahead of other positions and I think I would benefit from at least tabling this conversation until after we have that, at least the initial look and maybe we have that initial look and it becomes obvious that we want to accelerate this this year. It seems like there's budget for it. Um, it makes sense, I'm, I, so that would make sense in my mind that we might still make the decision. I think I just want to see the full plate of what that general fund budget looks like and what the full staff ask looks like before we accelerate this one. I've been in this seat for a number of years and this has been high on the list, but it has, for a number of reasons, gets pulled off and maybe this year's different, but also I think we're going to need every option we can for this next budget and I'd like to keep our options open if, until we see the full picture. Not opposed to it, but let's, in my opinion, I'd rather table for, at least a little more information.
That's the whole idea, is to get the information, that's the whole idea. And, and then make a decision based on that, because uh, that'll kind of see how it fits into the budget situation and, but it's, it's long overdue.
Agree overdue. And also I would hope this position would help on kind of putting the administrative pieces in order. What I don't want us to do by accelerating this position is ending up with the police more involved in enforcement action and I, so I, I would want to, just because we funded this position, um, I want us to make sure we're in a spot of kind of accelerating the administrative path, because I think one of our challenges is, um, with all respect for the good work that Chief Peterson and his, and his um department do, it's not the right channel for enforcement, is it? Why I think we've had the conversation about administrative enforcement.
It, it is not the, the proper channel, it's, it's, um, and I, I, I believe you're correct. I mean, we should have the ordinances in place and the methods in place as well, so that we don't have to delay or to train somebody twice with how we're going to enforce and go out in the public and do things, so.
Other perspectives or thoughts on, so maybe we're open to considering an advanced hire, but maybe let's make that, make that decision after we've seen at least the first draft of budget? Sound, I'm seeing some heads nodding.
No problem with that.
Is that okay? All right. Very good. Uh, transition to our workshop topic, third workshop topic, um, update on cannabis law and proposed ordinance, and I think Patrick and Amanda are going to tag team this one.
Thank you, inner counsel. Um, okay, so, uh, you have a packet in front of you, like PowerPoint, it's going to be the same one that, that I'll be going through up on this screen. You can go ahead and um stop me if you have questions or um need clarification and then at the end I have several discussion items that I'll need uh feedback, that, that we need feedback from, from counsel on. So the agenda is we're going to talk about the cannabis legislation summary. I think it's helpful for the council to understand what was approved this year at the legislature. Um, I have two proposed ordinances for you in your packet. One is an interim ordinance, also called a moratorium. Uh, one is a public use ordinance and then I'm looking for counsel feedback on a couple of different topics. So just a quick history on the cannabis legislation. In 2022, we approved, the legislature approved, legalized, excuse me, the sale and consumption of hemp derived cannabinoids. Um, so that allows edibles, beverages and topical products. Uh, it's called like the edibles law is sort of what it's been termed. Um, that does limit, the 22 law did limit the amount of THC that was allowed in the product. So it was a 0.3% of dried THC or five milligrams of THC per su, per serving, uh 50 milligrams per package for edibles, five milligrams uh per serving and two servings per container for beverages. In 2022, when they passed the 22, 2022 law, they did not include any licensing provisions and it seemed sort of obvious at that point in time that we were going to be marching towards full legalization within the near future. Just a couple examples of what the products were that were approved in 2022. So we have a beverage, a couple beverages, we have a couple edibles and then we have an ointment. The city's response to the 2022 law was that we passed a moratorium or that interim ordinance and the, our moratorium said that you couldn't operate a, a business that um sold these CBD hemp derived products. Um, that moratorium is set to expire December 15th of this year. It can always be rescinded sooner if council chooses to do so. The other trigger is if we um draft ordinances relevant to it, but we won't because um there's new law now. Okay, so 2023, what did we do in 2023? I shouldn't say we, what did the legislature do in 2023? Uh, they legalized um pretty much all THC related products. We now have a new word cannabis, that's what we are calling the marijuana products. Um, it's not just limited to hemp, um, it's, you know, any form of cannabis. The law also created a new office, it's called the Office of Cannabis Management or the OCM. It, it's going to be responsible for licensing and regulating cannabis, cannabis related businesses. Right now their licensing is set to start January of 2025. Um, the statute does limit the city's ability to regulate and restrict cannabis businesses. We'll get into that in a little more detail. It does uh allow a 10% tax on cannabis products, not including the lower potency hemp products. Those will be like your ointments and some drops. Uh, cities will see about 10% of the tax. It reduces criminal penalties and provides guidance for enforcement on previous conditions, uh, changes marijuana from a schedule one controlled substance to a schedule two and then created a variety of grant programs and business development programs uh for cannabis businesses. So this is the cannabis use regulatory structure. There is a 50 member cannabis advisory council. Uh, those are people that are appointed um by the governor and is supposed to include a representative of the League of Minnesota Cities. That is supposed to be advising the Office of Cannabis Management and helping direct them on all of the different avenues that they are supposed to be going down. Um, I show you this to just see that this is a really big machine. Um, some important terms that I think we all need to know. So this is a list of 14 businesses. These are all new businesses that were created by the cannabis legislation. Cannabis micro business and mezzo business. Those are, I'm calling those the farm to table movement for cannabis, because the concept is that you would uh grow or manufacture your cannabis on site, you would process your cannabis product on site, you would sell your cannabis product on site and you would consume your cannabis product on site. The difference between the micro business and the mezzo business is strictly the size. Um, and that has to do with if you're growing plants, for example, you know, the, the square footage that you're allowed for your plants. Cultivator is what it sounds like, this is going to be your cannabis growers, manufacturer, again what it sounds like, retailer, wholesaler, transporter, testing facility, event organizer, delivery service, and then there's some licenses for medical use as well. A cannabis product, so the cannabis product means a cannabis concentrate, that's going to be the stuff that's in vapes, um, most commonly and, and things like that. Um, a product that's infused with cannabinoids, um, so that can be um your edibles or um any product that you, you know, your drinks, whatever, things like that. Um, and then any other product that contains cannabis concentrate. Cannabis flower, that's going to be the oregano looking stuff that anybody who's older might know. Um, then we have our hemp derived consumer products, so those are, come from hemp versus the marijuana plant. And then we have artificially derived cannabinoids. So these are going to be some more of your delta eights, delta nines. Those are the things where we, um, it's manufactured in a lab, right? We are, we're taking a cannabis extract and we're mixing it with other things to sort of create this new cannabinoid compound. Local control, so what are we allowed to do as a local governmental unit? We may not prohibit the transportation, possession or use of cannabis flower cannabis products, the low potency hemp edibles or hemp derived consumer products. We are allowed to place reasonable restrictions on the time, place and manner of operations for cannabis business and events. Uh, the statute does include some minimum distance requirements um for schools, parks that um are in, have children facilities, um, and a few other thing, places. If we choose to register businesses with the city, then we may limit the number of cannabis retailers or these mezzo businesses. Essentially, we can regulate the places that would be selling uh the product to a consumer. Um, we need to have one, allow at least one shop per every 12,500 residents. Based on the number of residents in the city right now, that means that we need to allow at least one retail business, although the city is growing and so that number will change. There is one note um to, to mention here, the way that the statute is written is that it's, uh, what, you need to allow one business per every 12,500 residents, but if you choose to completely foreclose cannabis businesses in the city, you are able to do that if the county that you are in has enough cannabis retail businesses within the county as a whole totaling out to, to one per 12,500. So in our case, that's Washington County and so if there are other cities within the, the county that have, you know, many shops and reach that number, then potentially we would be able to prohibit uh cannabis retailers. I'm not suggesting that we do that, I'm just letting you know that that is an option under the statute. So our role, generally speaking, in the regulation will go like this. The cannabis office, excuse me, the cannabis business will apply to the OCM for a license. That license will check with us to make sure that they meet zoning approval and other feedback. It is unclear what that other feedback would be or if they will take any of that to, you know, um, affect the decision that they make at the OCM. The cities may issue registration to the cannabis li, uh, business once they receive the license and then we are responsible for doing the compliance checks and we can suspend our registrations if needed. Again, that's unclear what, if any, impact that would actually have on the business being able to operate. Um, and then we collect uh registration fees, which need to be nominal, we're not talking about very much money there, um, and then 10% of the tax revenue.
Question?
Yeah.
Okay, so the licensing is through the state of Minnesota?
Yes.
And so we can't license it like we would a liquor establishment or?
We may not license.
Okay.
So, and we don't have any ability for the license criteria, is that right? That's also set by the state?
That is.
So it's the only decision for us is how many licenses?
Uh, and where? So where do we want these? And so, and that's why I kind of showed you that long list of businesses, we're not just talking about retail shops. We need to be thinking about where do we want growers, where do we want um wholesalers, where do we want, you know, some of these other businesses that maybe weren't on the radar before? Wh- when we're talking about that, what are we talking about? We're really talking about a couple of things, we're talking about safety and security, so how are they securing their operations? And then frankly, odor. Um, odor is going to be a big issue potentially in states that have legalized cannabis ahead of us. Odor has been one of the most difficult things to manage.
And when, when you say one license based on our size, is that one license of any of those types or is that one license that is the retailer?
One license of the retailer.
Of the retailer.
Or those mezzo micro businesses, those farm to table.
Okay.
Businesses. I'm sure that's not the appropriate term, but it's kind of what I see.
Um, while we're talking about terminology, can you, um, a cannabis event, what is that? I know that's a defined term in the statute, can you just provide some clarity around in our environment today? Many events could be viewed, I, just technically, what are they referring to as a cannabis event?
Yeah, so a cannabis event, it is a licensed thing under the statute as well and it is a little bit unclear what they're referring to, because they're required to have a, a license to do it, but then they kind of, the statute goes on to talk about they have to get additional um approval through that license if they want to actually consume on the site. So presumably they would be maybe selling uh cannabis. I suppose it would be, I, I, so I'm not really entirely sure what this cannabis event would look like. It could be something like, um, well, I'm thinking of Stillwater, but lumberjack days if cannabis, a cannabis um retailer wanted to be there, they would probably have to, not probably, they would have to get a cannabis event license. Um, and then if they wanted to allow consumption, sort of similar to like a beer tent, then they would have to get a consumption license as well. It's a rider essentially on, on the event license.
Thank you.
We don't have authority over those things and that would, those would be issued by the OCM. It is really unclear right now how they're going to structure some of these. Um, inherent in that, inherent in the licensing thing I should mention as well, the statute is a little unusual in that it has a lot of criteria written in the statute for what they're looking for in a license holder. So I think they're presuming that they're going to have more people waiting in line January of 2025 than what the cities will be allowing licenses for. I think they're assuming that most cities are going to try to limit their licenses to this 12, five, you know, one per 12,500 number. So the, the statute contemplates um a, a series of criteria whereby you get points and then hypothetically you move up the line to be eligible for the license. Um, those criteria are things like, um, if you've been convicted of a cannabis related crime before, you get an extra point, um, you want points.
Reward points.
Yes. Um, if a family member has been convicted of a cannabis related crime, you get a point. If you live in an area that has um been um overly impacted by cannabis criminalization, you get points. Um, so there's a, there's some unusual criteria from previous laws. I don't know how they're going to make that work practically speaking. And then the other piece of that is um the grant programs that they have written in here, again, a lot of language around that are the same, they use the same criteria um to be eligible for your grants.
Follow up question um related to that process. So today I, I think about the correlation, I think about, I'm drawing a comparison to how we do like tobacco licensing. So we have had situations where an applicant will come before us and city staff, police department do their background checks, make some recommendations, bring those findings to council, council makes a decision. This is different, right, in that we do the license, but the licensing decision, all of that criteria, is that determined at the state level?
So this is, we don't get to do the license at all.
There's nothing at all.
And, and that's why I said it's unclear, so they'll, once they, once they do whatever their background checks are and whatever their mechanism is for issuing these licenses, they will send the information to the city to confirm that they're properly zoned, so that they made our zoning code and for quote unquote feedback. But that's where I'm, that's where city attorneys are a little confused, because generally then that would be where we would point out background check items and in this case it seems like they're sort of counter to what we are used to for where you would go with your background check.
Understood, okay.
So, um, and, yeah, go ahead. It's, there's, it, this is the bill, to sign it, like, it's, this thing is insane.
The process for background checks, has that been established or is that part of building the, so that's unknown to be determined based on how the office gets set up?
Yeah, that, that will be something for the, the office, OCM to determine and establish, again, based on that 50 member advisory council. Okay. So tonight, um, what, what should the city do now, right? We're in this sort of unknown world of, we don't know really how this is all going to shake out, what this is going to look like. So we do have two ordinances for your So we do have two ordinances for your consideration. Neither one of these ordinances are on the agenda tonight for any sort of hearing. It's to get your feedback to say, yes, we want that, no, we don't want that, we want you to change something, those kinds of things. The first one is the interim ordinance. So this is in the statute. They have explicit language where they say, cities, you can put in an interim ordinance or moratorium until January of 2025. That does not allow any cannabis business in your city. It's a little confusing because technically under the statute, licensing doesn't start until 2025. So hypothetically, these wouldn't be legal businesses. So again, a little unclear why it's in there except to say that the statute isn't really written from, it's not going to be easy to enforce. So if this was our, if we use the statute as the tool to try to say shut down a business that opened, it would be messy. If we have our interim ordinance, that's a cleaner mechanism by which to stop a business that would be operating illegally. So proposed is this interim ordinance. The reasons that, besides what I just mentioned, the reasons that I think it's important to adopt this is, one, they give us the ability to do so in the statute. But two, it allows us staff to have time to figure out where do we want this variety of uses? What makes sense for time, place, and manner restrictions? And then it allows the OCM the time to draft the model regulations and recommendations. And then, of course, it allows them time to get their licensing scheme off the ground. One important note. The proposed interim ordinance would not prevent current businesses who were selling those twenty twenty-two edibles before we put in our ordinance that prevented those twenty twenty-two edible cannabis businesses. So that law went into effect, would that be like August of 2022, right? We put in our moratorium December of 2022. So if you were a business that was selling one of those cannabis, or excuse me, one of those hemp derived edibles in between August and December, you're a legally conforming business. It was only if you tried to open later. Under the statute, they are, they have a kind of a carve out for those businesses that are able to operate until 2025 when the licensing all comes on, provided that they register with the Department of Health. So I'm just making it clear that we can't shut any of those businesses down if they exist. I don't know if there's any in the city. It's possible that they wouldn't even necessarily be a dedicated, in fact, they probably wouldn't be a dedicated hemp business. It would just be a business that was selling some sort of edibles, or you know, the creams, or the whatever, that kind of stuff. Or your liquor stores that would be selling the THD products. Does that make sense? Okay, so this does not affect those. So these are the words of the actual interim ordinance, that they cannot operate a cannabis business that requires a cannabis business license. That's why those twenty twenty-two sellers are carved out because they don't require a license until 2025. And that were directed, the city staff is directed to figure out what we would come back recommendations on time, place, manner restrictions. The second use ordinance, excuse me, the second cannabis ordinance that you have in your packet is a cannabis use ordinance. Twenty twenty-three cannabis laws authorize adult use of cannabis only in the following places. It can be in your private residence, includes in your yard, on private property not generally accessible by the public unless the property owner himself or herself prohibits the use, and on the premises of an establishment or an event license to permit onsite consumption. But there is no enforcement mechanism in the statute, and it's unclear if how you could even enforce that. The statute does have a provision that allows cities to put into ordinance cannabis use ordinance essentially that clearly prohibits it in public places, and then the penalty for that is a petty misdemeanor. So we're allowed to do that. There isn't a statutory definition of public place. General consensus right now is that it conclude, it can, a public place includes more than government property. And this hearkens back to the indoor, the indoor clean, Clean Indoor Air Act where it's not just public property that, you know, this covers, this covers some private property as well. I did work with the police chief on the language that is in the proposed ordinance to make sure that this is what would be helpful for the enforcement. And so what we're looking at is a public place will mean all government owned property. So that's going to be our parks, city hall, you know, places like that, as well as private property that is regularly and frequently open to or made available for use by the public in sufficient numbers to give clear notice of the property's current dedication to public use. That's not exactly a term of art because it's a really long sentence. But essentially, those words mean we're going to take the public place definition from Indoor Clean Air Act and from some other laws, and we're going to use that as our public place definition. And then what you can't consume there is going to be the cannabis flower, cannabis products, artificially derived cannabinoid, and hemp derived consumer products. It does not include low potency stuff. So basically, if it cannot get you high, it is not covered by the statute. Excuse me, is not covered by this proposed ordinance.
Amanda, one more question, if you don't mind. If a business such as a restaurant, for instance, has a large parking lot or wherever, they could certainly have their own policy to affect that, right? I mean, they.
Yes.
To enhance this regulation.
Yes, they could, well, right, because they can, they could post a sign that says we prohibit it on our property. But, you know, and so then if someone's doing it, then they could, you know, ask them to leave. And I suppose if the person refused to leave, then we could have a trespass or whatever. But this is another tool. I don't know that this will be used so much for the restaurants, but certainly public parks. Practically speaking, it's probably more of, I think.
I just wanted to differentiate a private parking lot, which is a restaurant, for instance, compared to a public park. You know, a public park, we're the ones that kind of regulate that. But a business that, and I just picked on the restaurants as one example, but they're technically private. It's public use, they invite the public in, but it's still privately owned, and they pay taxes on it. And so they could have their own dedicated, not ordinance, but at least a way of preventing it on their own property if they wanted to.
Yeah, yes, they could.
So if we did not, so if we did not pass this ordinance, and if a business did not have it be posted, right? And if somebody were to be, let's just say, smoking in their, smoking in the restaurant parking lot, if we don't pass this ordinance, if that restaurant calls the police, the police aren't able to do anything other than perhaps a trespass type ticket?
So I would defer to the chief, but they couldn't write a ticket related to cannabis use?
Cannabis, there would be, there is nothing. But if we pass this, if we pass the ordinance that prohibits the use in public spaces, it's prohibited in a park, but it's also prohibited in that restaurant parking lot because that restaurant parking lot, although privately owned, is considered a public space. Is that, do I have that correct?
Yes. Chief, anything to add?
No, but I will tell everyone that I really appreciate Amanda doing everything she's doing in regards to explaining this. Because believe me, every police chief and sheriff out there in the last few months, if not the last year, has been very confused on this whole statute that was passed. But yeah, there's a lot of gray areas. And Amanda and I have spoke on numerous occasions. Councilmember Roberts also called me prior to August first. There's a lot of what ifs. And so answering some of these questions are, it's still a gray area. But we're really going to utilize this ordinance, if it is passed, is going to be for educational purposes and things like that until we really understand the statute, until the legislature figures this out, to be quite honest with you.
Interesting. Councilmember Roberts?
So, excuse me, if this is like taking that Clean Air Act language, are you saying that if someone owns a restaurant, and just like someone who's in their restaurant goes out and has a cigarette, they're not allowed to go out and smoke pot because it's a public area even though it's private property?
Yes.
And that's the only way we can write the ordinance?
No, we can limit public place to just government owned property. If you don't want to have, if you, if you want to leave quasi, I would, let's call them quasi-public places out of it, and you don't want to include those, you don't have to. The risk with that is, or the potential with that is that's not a tool then that the police have in the event that people are causing problems at one of these. And really, it probably is restaurants, right? Let's be honest, I see, I don't see this happening at a business necessarily. But restaurants, it could, gas stations, you know, more of those kinds of places is where I see this being a problem. And it's not just the smoking, it's the consuming it in any capacity, right? So it could be an edible, it could be vape, yeah.
But that's why I was asking about that very same thing because each one of these individual businesses could have their own policy.
Yes.
Posted, and ever, you know, know what's going on. So the difference between smoking cigarettes, for instance, or smoking pot, if I'm smoking pot and I'm next to her, she's getting the same benefit out of it, if you want to call it a benefit. But the result is the same, you know, and so I, it just boggles my mind that all of a sudden smoking pot is more socially acceptable than smoking tobacco. And this whole thing, if we, and we can't, and then it has an effect on drivers, for instance, if the police can test that. It isn't even a way of testing for it. And so I don't know why we can't have more regulation or whatever it takes to protect the public.
Yeah, so again, the statute was written in a way that was a little unusual. Typically, when you're going to limit something to say you can only do it in these areas, right? You're going to say this is illegal except for this, and then list your things where you can do it. This doesn't do that first part. But for example, you're not allowed to smoke it in a place where a minor could inhale. You're not allowed to smoke it in your car, consume it, excuse me. This is not just about smoking, this is consumption. You're not allowed to consume it in your vehicle. There's a few other things where you're not allowed to consume it. But again, there's no real easy mechanism to enforce that. And as the chief said, the intention is to use this as a educational tool. Hey buddy, you can't smoke that here, hey, you can't be vaping here, what, you know, that kind of thing. But if you have to sell that person five or six times, okay, here's your two hundred dollar ticket. It's a petty misdemeanor for continuing to do that. And then it's a tool that potentially, if you have a same thing, you have a business owner who calls and says, look, I've got this person who just won't stop doing this. Maybe they come in and they're bringing their vape in with them, and it's not even about the smoke, right? It's something else. It just is a tool for the police to be able to use if they need it. That's why it was written pretty broad. And that is why, and what I will tell you is it's not as broad as Stillwater's. And I've seen a few others that it's, they're limiting it just to government. Cities are definitely sort of doing different things on this. Some are going real wide with it, and some are staying very narrow. This is sort of somewhere in the middle, the ordinance in front of you.
You referenced the Stillwater, what was the Stillwater, is more narrow definition of their, or broader?
Broader, their public place definitions, I don't, it's really broad.
And then they have, they have not allowed it in that broad?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a number of things that just come to mind on this topic of public spaces. And I'm usually really careful about what we tell somebody they can and can't allow on their own property. But in this case, if it's a business that is open to the public and open to children and minors, you want that, I want that to be a environment that is welcoming for that. And use, especially of, you know, smoking and that, having that smoke is challenging in that space. And so I would, I would be in favor of us adopting, having a broader definition of public space.
This doesn't trump the Clean, you know, indoor act. So it's not like people are going to be sitting at the restaurant smoking pot.
No, this does not trump, that's still.
Not indoor.
Well, that's still true, but I'm not, I'm not certain about what substances the Indoor Air Act covers. Because up until this point, it hasn't been a legal substance. And so I'm not sure if in the substances that they list, tobacco, whatever, whatever, this would have been an illegal substance up until now. So that, I'm not actually sure how it addresses it. I would presume that it covers it, but I don't know that.
Could you confirm that before we talk, have our next discussion?
Yeah.
The thing we're talking about is all forms. And so it'd be fairly difficult if somebody's walking around the park having something that's not kicking off a puff of smoke.
It's, yeah, chewing it or whatever, yeah.
Right.
Well, the other piece of that, the chief, as the chief and I talked about, is from a practical perspective. It really, it really only works if the person admits that they're consuming the product. Because you don't, you're not testing for a petty misdemeanor, you're not doing any of that kind of thing. So really, it's, I see it working like this. Okay, you've told this guy, you can't be consuming cannabis in the park, and the guy says, yes, I can, it's legal now. Well, he's just admitted to consuming the cannabis, so we don't have to go through the whole rigmarole of proving what it was he was consuming, right? Because absent either a confession or a very obvious odor, this is, this is just not something that we're going to be able to undertake, practically speaking.
Can that be separated from the smoking end of it, versus the consumption of edibles? And can they separate that at all?
Sort of, the problem is, is that the way that they've defined their products. And so they're sort of commingled. There's some weird overlap in how they've defined their terms, which is why I have the four terms listed here, that it isn't immediately clear that if we just limit it to cannabis flower, that we're only going to be getting, you know, only avoiding smoke. And that's, that wouldn't include vapes, that doesn't cover vapes.
It seems like the smoking part is the one that affects other people more than somebody that's just consuming an edible.
Yes. Right, right, the problem, the problem is the vapes aren't part of the flower, right? So those will be in the, they could be in the cannabis products, artificially derived cannabinoid, or the hemp derived cannabis, because they just can fit under any of those three definitions. Yeah, no, this is messy. Okay, so another item for your consideration, and then you guys can tell us all of your, what you're thinking. Additional items. Statue permits municipal cannabis store. Is that something that council wants staff to research? This isn't like municipal liquor stores where we get the market and there's no private opportunity because we are stuck with that twelve five, one per twelve five number. So once we hit the threshold for requiring two, potentially, we could, you know, would have two. So if we wanted to have one, that's something that we would want to talk about. Why would I even ask this question? I don't know. I can tell you that there has been some discussion by some police chiefs, I talked to the chief about this as well, that a little bit, it appeals to them, the concept of having a municipal cannabis store because of, we're responsible for regulating, we're responsible for making sure that they're compliant. We're responsible for making sure that the products that are in there are legal. We're responsible for making sure that they're following the age checks, all of that stuff. And given the vast array of products that you have access to, that's a really big order. If you have, if you're running the business, you can make sure that you are only purchasing products or providing products that are legal, excuse me. Why wouldn't you, for all of the obvious reasons that we wouldn't want a cannabis store? So, something to think about. The statute permits time, place, manner restrictions on cannabis businesses. Is that something the staff wants to, that council wants staff to research? So that's going to be where is it appropriate to have your growing businesses? Where is it appropriate to have your retail businesses? Where would it be appropriate to have, you know, your wholesale? Where would it be appropriate to have, you know, your wholesaler, or whatever that might be? I would think that we would recommend for a retail business, that would look similar to a tobacco store, so our distance requirements from, um, schools or whatever, we have to mirror the, the statute, but, you know, we could look at some other, um, time restrictions, so maybe they have to close by a certain hour, or whatever. And like I said, those growing, manufacturing, transporter businesses, we would need to do a deeper review on that, and then we would probably want to wait for at least some guidance from O C M. Generally, the things we want to think about are the safety, security of the business, the odor, and then the accessibility to minors. So, this is the end. These are the four things that I need feedback from council on. Do you want to move forward with that interim ordinance? Do you want to move forward with that cannabis use ordinance? Thoughts on the municipal cannabis store, and thoughts on the time, place, manner restrictions?
Thank you, Amanda. Council, who wants to start?
My, my vote would be to move forward with the cannabis use ordinance, and not a moratorium necessarily, because we're just revisiting it. And ordinances could be modified, the same as you would a moratorium.
Would you, did you say no on the interim use ordinance? Or the interim ordinance?
I, I guess I would skip over that.
Okay.
That, that's all I'm saying. If we're gonna spend the money or the time to come up with an ordinance, go right directly to that.
Just some thoughts, or a question too, for the chief. So, as far as the property rights thing, that's what bothers me about restricting that for someone as a restaurant, but, but chief, what, ideally, what would you like to see? What would be the easiest for, for the department, your staff, to try to manage this, and?
Well, this is gonna be, it's gonna be really interesting, because we don't have a lot of the means and resources available. And when I say that, it's not the staffing, it's the, you know, whenever you know, how often are you gonna find somebody who's actually smoking? I'm gonna be completely honest, and I hope I'm checking myself, but August 1st was a little bit nerve-wracking, because we didn't know what was gonna happen. I remember speaking with you about that, and we didn't know what was gonna happen on night to night and all that. And, um, we haven't received any that I know, and if there was, or have been, I'm not sure how many complaints on that, on use. But I do believe we need something in place for, um, regulating the use in public places, for sure. So it does give us something that we can go forward and educate, and/or go to that next step if need be, whatever that next step might be, you know, issuing a petty misdemeanor to somebody who's in violation, you know, after, like we usually do, educate, educate, and then, of course, in many cases. I feel this is good to have in place to start. You know, maybe we can change it, or add to it, what have you, in the near future, because that had a few months from now, or is it, you know, next year? But I fully recommend this ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I just want to make a comment for Blake, because in no way, shape, or form was I implying that we put a restriction on somebody's parking lot. What I'm saying is that, do they have the opportunity to put in their own restrictions, or their own policy, one at a time, you know? And so if somebody has a restaurant, and they don't mind people smoking pot, it's up to them. That's the way I think it should be. But as far as the public parking, you know, the public parks are concerned, I want to protect our kids, because that's where they are. And, uh, so I'm all forward that, restricting it there, for sure.
Other thoughts on this topic specifically around, kind of the first two questions around the interim ordinance and the cannabis use ordinance?
Yeah, I'd support that. I'd, I'd support that.
Yeah. Both of them? The interim use, or, the interim ord, the interim ordinance, or the moratorium, and then also the cannabis use, which is more of the public space?
Correct.
Yeah. I, I, I can see the, um, I could, I could, I'm definitely in favor of the limitation of cannabis use in, like, our parks, government spaces. I could go either way on definition of enforcement on private property. I can, if it were a challenge, and we were having a lot of complaints, and if we needed to do something to kind of create some better clarity around what is required, I might have a stronger opinion, but I think, you know, not that the environment, the environment may change, but it's good feedback to hear of what's happened so far. And if, if that means that we have a, um, a definition of, you know, public spaces being more limited to actual public parks, seems like that would at least make sense.
I, I think the marketplace is gonna play itself out. If people, if, if people don't want to be in a restaurant, or a, a place where they allow that, they're not gonna take their kids, they'll go somewhere else.
They're not gonna go there.
One, one owner might say, I'm not gonna allow it, the other one's fine, let the public decide where they want to spend their money. But as far as the parks, and part, that's for sure, I think that needs to be placed there.
Right. Question of, is there any other feedback specific around the ordinance, the first two items, the ordinances?
I just want to say that I'm in favor for the interim ordinance, the first one.
The moratorium?
Yep, the moratorium, just so that we can get more, uh, guidance from the league, from the state, going forward with that. And then, um, for the second one, um, whether the definition of public space is broad or more narrow, it's kind of a toss-up for me. No, just essentially what you both have said. I'd be favorable to either one. I'd, at this point in time, for me, it's, um, it, it doesn't make or break one way or the other. And knowing that it's an ordinance, if it is more narrow, and there are problems, we could always amend the ordinance to make it more broad, so.
So, just so I'm clear, you're gonna, council, um, yes, we're moving forward with the interim ordinance, and for the use ordinance, change it to just government property?
Seems like that's where their consensus is, on government property.
Okay.
Yep.
And so you're good for both of those to come back, ideally at the next meeting for hearing? Okay.
Seeing heads nod. This question around a municipal cannabis store, I just have a first question. Is it, is it still illegal at the federal level? And is, and is money derived from the sale not allowed to be in the federal banking system? This just puts us, as a government entity, in a funny position to have a government-sponsored cannabis store?
It's a lot of debate, the feds will tell you that, but do they stop it in the most part? Probably not.
But if we're the city, like, I don't, like, aren't we required to kind of follow those rules? Like?
Well, everybody's, everybody's required to follow the banking laws, so everybody's going to be in violation of the banking laws, obviously, but other states don't seem to care as well.
The compliance.
And it's just a matter of, I mean, it's just a matter of how you feel about being in the business. I mean, you know, part of me says, now that they put a moratorium on, uh, sales tax, maybe we should be looking at getting revenue that we can divert to some of the other big projects, especially next week, when you see what we're, you're gonna see. Why not at least explore it, and see what kind of revenue we're talking about? You can always get out of the business. I know there's people who'll say, what the heck are you doing? Why are you, why is the city in that business? But then again, why not? And if it, if it provides us a revenue that we can pave streets, or do parks, or fund downtown improvements, or whatever the case may be, instead of raising property taxes, it, it's definitely one of those moral, moral decisions, moral and ethics, and where you want to go, but I don't think it'd hurt at least to take a look at it. I don't know what kind of revenue we're talking about, I have no idea.
Then the, the startup, too, we'd have to look at that, you know, what's that, what it would all take to get that.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we'd have to do. I mean, it would be an exercise in what it would be, but, and I'm not encouraging us to do it, but I'm not discouraging. I mean, it's, you know, we're, we're short on revenue here. I mean, we, we have a revenue problem in the city, but we also have a pro, revenue problem in the state, that they don't give us enough sources of revenue to pay for the things we need to pay for. We're basically property tax-dependent, and lucky we have anything else. So, what's the profit on a, on a cannabis store? I don't know.
Have other, sorry to interrupt. Have other states allowed?
I don't know. I don't know what, I'm, uh, who knows? I mean, this law, again, as Amanda has stated, this law's just got here. And, you know, so, we can look at it, you know, it may take us a few, a little, I mean, it'll probably take us until mid-next year to figure that out, and do that research on, but.
That's the, so what you just said is part of what makes me think, no, this is not what we should, this is not what we should be good at? Like, the mark, there are people that, and this industry is, exists, and there are people that have this knowledge, and we, there's a strong part of me that thinks that, that's not our contribution to our community. But what makes me, gives me pause and think, well, maybe, is I also am not in love with the licensing requirements, and the, the, many of the things that we would have flagged as a concern around giving a license is now actually encouraged by the new state law. And so, the way for us ultimately to control that is to be the license holder, and.
I mean, that's, that's the argument was made. We can, can we, you know, we can hire somebody that knows the business and run the business, and that, but we can, we're responsible for checking the IDs, and the quality, and the quantities, and all that, that, you know? And it doesn't mean you can be the only game in town, but then again, it also means you can be the only game in town, at least for a while. And that's, that's, that tells me there's revenue, and again, we need revenue, that's just from the financial side, what my opinion.
Don't get me wrong, yeah. What about liabilities, Amanda? What do you think the liabilities would be?
I'm sure that the league is going to tell us about the liabilities of opening a marijuana store, a cannabis store. They'll have some opinion. Again, this is also new. Uh, I'm sure they'll have to figure that out as well, because that's where we get our liability insurance through the league, so I'm sure they're starting to think about that as well. And where it would be, I mean, where, where, where's a good place for this? Is it downtown, you know, the downtown Emporium? Or do you put it out by the interstate, so people drive by all the time, and you get more traffic?
Flashing lights.
You know? It's like a fast food, you have a drive-in for whatever. So, I mean, there's, not to be flippant.
The drive-in.
Not to be flippant, but, you know, there is some reason to at least maybe research a little bit, but again, that's up to you guys.
What is, I don't know, what does everyone think?
There's nothing wrong with looking into it, I mean, it's a matter of, I guess it would be that big of a deal to at least look into and get the information? Does everybody knows? Or is that expensive to do that?
I can comment on the money. Michigan is targeted right now to have $3 billion just on cannabis sales by the end of the year. Might not sound like a lot, but that's strictly dedicated to cannabis sales, $3 billion. And Hannah's question, council member Valento, there is no other state that I know of, I looked and tried to figure it out. My understanding is, there is no other state that license, licenses municipal cannabis stores. This is unique to Minnesota, for whatever reason, they decided.
Yeah. Yeah, just, I mean, I think just to be clear, so, one of the news channels doesn't call tomorrow morning and says, Forrest Lake's considering this, but this is just considering.
A workshop topic?
Yeah, workshop, just throwing it out there, but, you know, Cambridge has municipal liquor stores, Lindstrom does, there's a lot of revenue that's generated from that, and I just.
The city of Edina.
It'd be silly not to at least explore it, I think, and get public feedback. Ultimately, it's the public, whatever they really want. Do they want us in the business or not? Here's the pluses and minuses, it can, you know, your tax bait could go down X amount, this is our projected number. I think that's all a good discussion to have.
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, $250,000 profit versus a million-dollar profit, and depending on the pro forma you put together, and how it works, but yeah, I mean, that, that drives the boss, really, and you can do a lot with some of that money. Again, not encouraging or discouraging, it's something we should look, maybe, maybe look at it, if the council's interested.
Compliance nerd in me just really needs to wrap my head around that we can have a legal means of transacting that, so, that would.
I think that's part of the question as well.
Right. And if I'm a private business, taking that risk with the federal banking system, that's a different decision than if I'm a city government, and I just, something to check into and looking.
A lot of questions. Yeah, it could be cash only, yeah.
Cash only, but we gotta do something with the cash, right? Like, unless we're gonna just vault it, and. Shaking his head, I mean.
You'll pay vault in a bank like this.
I mean, Amanda, we're gonna just pay you in, we're just gonna pay you in cash.
Well, the cannabis dealers, they run around with cash in their trunk all the time, right? It gets to be a funny, laughable thing, I.
It felt like you guys needed to know what was in the bill, or the, the law, but.
Well, and there are some regulatory concerns within the law, that for the summer reasons that cities think that this is a good idea. I think if, the, there's a lot of valid reasons to at least look into it. Time, place, manner restrictions, um, how do we see this working? Do we have like a, I mean, does this require us to open up all of our zoning and change it in all of our zoning, or do we do a separate, like, zoning sec, or like a weed marijuana section of the zoning code? What is that? What is this, what is this, like, the questions for item four, where does that live?
So, that, that's a little, I think, unclear, or amorphous right now. So, we could take the stance that retail sales are retail sales. I don't care if you're selling a pair of shoes, or cannabis, it's a retail sale, and so wherever we would allow retail sales, that's where we're going to allow our cannabis stores.
Same with agriculture, then? You could say the same thing.
Exactly. So we could go that broad, and then really, that, your only time, place, manner restrictions are whatever your zoning code says for the broader use. Or you could decide that, um, you know, if you're a cannabis business, you need to be a conditional use in all of these areas, because we're going to specify that this particular type of agriculture requires a few more, um, conditions around it. And again, I would come back to, you're looking at safety, you're looking at odor, and you're looking at access to, you know, by minors, or really, your big three. Um, and.
I have a silly question. You've mentioned odor a couple of times, this is a really ignorant question.
The plants smell terrible when they're growing.
Is it, is it the growing, or is it the consumption odor?
Both.
Really?
So, the plant, the plants have a strong smell when they are growing, um, when they are mature plants, I should say, not, not when they're, you know, seedlings. But when they are, when they are mature plants, they have a strong odor. And so, you know, maybe it's, you're, you're stuck to greenhouses. Like, there is things that you can do to mitigate the odor, but places where Cottage Grove has a manufacturing facility for medical cannabis, and they have had to put in place all different kinds of, like, exhaust systems and things to make sure that they weren't causing odor problems for their, for the neighbors. So, that is a, that is a, from everything that we have learned from the states who have come before us, odor tends to be one of your biggest issues.
Well, in that case, I mean.
I'm glad I asked. I wouldn't have expected that from the growing process.
Yeah, just, based on that point, I mean, I just, I think a conditional use permit would make a lot of sense.
In that conditional use permit, just like we can do screening requirements, we can also do some sort of, what are your odor control mechanisms, or some sort of requirement?
Right, so then probably, I envision this, and, and I would defer to Abby and staff to, you know, their thoughts, but I would envision performance standards, so if you're going to be a cannabis grower, you have performance standards, or you have to show that, you know, their odor isn't beyond the property line, or whatever, you know, whatever our things would be, um, and then potentially fencing, maybe you have to have fencing around your property versus, you know, not, to, to keep people who would want to help themselves out, or whatever. So, so those, it could be like that, or it could be even more restrictive, and we say, you don't get the whole agricultural area, and if you're a cannabis agro cultivator, you know, your area is, and we designate a smaller zoning district. So it. So, it really can be quite, that's where some guidance from council. And obviously, we would want to study it and try to figure out. And frankly, this is kind of why the interim ordinance is critical because we sort of want to give the OCM the time to give us some of their recommended documents. Here's how they think this is going to play out.
On the slide you asked about time, is that specifically around like retail sales of, you know, alcohol? You know, we, for a period of time, we restrict it on Sundays, we restrict at a certain time. Is that the type of guidance you're looking for? Or is there other time components we should be considering beyond just the retail transaction or the consumption transaction?
So, the time, place, manner is the words that they use in the statute, that we're allowed to have time, place, manner restrictions. So, that's where I get those words. I don't know that we necessarily would have any time restrictions outside of what we would maybe have for regular business. You know, again, I don't, I'm not quite sure what that would look like.
So, counsel, with that kind of broad feedback or kind of that broad tee up, any other feedback specific to number four?
Well, I guess I don't know that I'd spend a lot of time on that one. I mean, rather see the OCM come out with some of their guidelines, you know, and then we can decide if we could like those or if we want to try to limit it.
Yeah, we do have quite a bit of that stuff in place that we can certainly piggyback on too, you know? Liquor and cigarettes and whatever, tobacco rather.
Yeah, I agree. And I think as long as we're hitting, touching the points of odor, obviously, sales to minors, to not allow that, limit that, like tobacco stores. And then safety, essentially your three points in the slide.
Any other points of feedback on this topic? All right. Amanda, Patrick, Chief, anything else you need from us on this topic?
No.
All right. We will move into staff updates and Karen.
No current updates.
Abby?
Just a couple of quick updates. We're kind of in that planning zoning push. As all of you know, if you've been around a while, you start to fight the weather. So, still got a number of active developments that are going through that planning zoning process that you're going to be seeing over these next couple meetings. We're officially trying to work with both public and private developers this year to still get some ground moving, some construction permits released. I saw several of you at the EDA training. Thank you very much. It's good to just have some fresh reminders. I think we'll continue to work with legal counsel administration on how we can kind of do those routine training opportunities for all of our elected and appointed officials. And then lastly, I did send out an email about community corn feed volunteers needed, August 29th. I don't know if any of you have reached out to Jamie. We are still short on volunteers. She likes to do two time slots, so about an hour and a half apiece during that three-hour block. So, if you could let her know in the next couple of days or so, she is going to have an extended leave coming up. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you for that reminder. Patrick?
No report tonight.
All right. Amanda?
Nothing. Take care.
Dave?
Nothing to add. Mayor, City Council, I guess I'll just take a couple of minutes just to kind of try to provide you guys some background on the lift station project, just to kind of show you some of the stuff that we do go through. Maybe helps answer some questions or concerns you guys might have too. But, so the lift station that was brought up tonight, Lift Station 3C on 12th Avenue Southeast is located in an outlot that has a drainage utility easement dedicated to the city. So, that's, you know, we go into that property, we find out the background, what's there and that. And once we scope improvements, if we stay within it, we stay within it. If we need additional easements or temporary easements, we go obtain those with adjacent property owners. We hand out notices to all the adjacent property owners, and we're very, we're very diligent about that. Spend a lot of time with that, making sure that those property owners get that, in the case tonight. Gentlemen that did speak, just happens to be 10 houses down the street. If we would then individual title searches on properties, we would then find that that property has a needed access to this outlot. So, that's stuff that we wouldn't know. But in this existing drainage utility easement, there's existing storm sewer that runs down the lake already in orange. And then the existing manhole was here. And then this blue stuff right here is new because we added a valve vault. And the reason we add valve vaults now because this station, with the information we have available, best guess is it's no newer than 1971. So, we have a station that's 53 years old. And that's why certain stations were targeted. This one specifically has taken all the flows from Woodland Avenue, that peninsula area coming all the way south. And it goes all the way back down to Highway 97, and those flows come north to this specific lift station. So, that Bayview development by the BP gas station, South Shore, 15th, and then all that peninsula-ish area off that way too, all come to this specific lift station before they're forced mained, back down 12th Avenue Southeast, out and across Bell's Park, connects into a main interceptor over there. So, major lift station. That's why the work was needed, 53 years old. So, those are the types of structures that were targeted. I mean, you guys are pushing close to 50 lift stations in the city, and that's just something that's common when you develop around a lake over time. And then how flat it is when we move out, you know, and continue to develop further south too. You're going to eventually be adding more lift stations over time. One project that we did scope with the North Shore Circle, we were able to eliminate two lift stations, relocate a brand-new lift station, and reroute some of the gravity flows. But in this case, we didn't reroute any gravity flows. Otherwise, we'd have been chasing that pipe down the road and ripping up the whole roads in the neighborhood and the water main and all the storm sewer, you know? So, here was an easy scoping of that project, but we did stay within the right of way. There's a storm sewer there. Yeah, the pavement's all ripped up. There was a nice drive to it, but that's supposed to actually be reinstalled Wednesday. So, these are, that's little tidbit of what we go through on these specific projects. And we are very diligent about handing notices out to the adjacent properties that are going to be affected with construction. So, if you got any more questions or, on those types of projects or any project, feel free to reach out to me before meeting, and we certainly can meet on sites or we can have conversations so it doesn't have to go like this. And then you guys are sitting in the hot seat, and I'm sitting here too, like, oh, just give me a moment to talk, right? So, I just wanted to bring that up and kind of give you a scenario of what we might go through on a specific situation in sites and reasons why that particular property owner was not specifically notified on this type of a project. Also, with that, earlier tonight on the consent agenda wasn't approved, pay request for this project. If we can get a signed pay request for that project back to me by noon tomorrow, we can submit that for reimbursement. That's our deadline, is the 15th of each month. If we miss it, then it would have to just wait. But our other meetings have been earlier in the month, so it's been an easy turnaround, but that.
We'll get your signature tonight.
Just coordinating with you. And just a friendly reminder, next Monday, upstairs, 4:30 to 6:30 is our public open house number three for County State Highway 32. I encourage you to attend that because this is kind of a part of the project where you either change it or you don't. So, if we're not there, it's going to be very difficult to make any changes after this point in time moving forward if that project's still going to stay on track for a 26 project. So, with that, I'll just open up with any questions that you might have.
Thank you for the update, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan? All right. Chief Peterson?
Yeah, here in City Council members, just a few updates for you. As I mentioned earlier, August 1st, Tuesday, which coincided with the Arts in the Park, the night to night and many block parties that the police and fire attended and were at, went really well. The first hour, of course, was quite a bit of rain. But once the rain stopped, lots of people came out. So, it was great seeing everyone. And I believe we have three more Arts in the Park that officers will be at, August 15th, tomorrow, 22nd, and the 29th. And then last Saturday, we had a couple of officers at the airport flying, which was well-attended. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it there, but it sounded like it went really well. And I know a few of my family members were there and they really enjoyed it, so. Other than that, that's all I have for you, unless you have some questions for me.
Questions for Chief? All right. Chief Newman?
No updates.
Very good. And Kevin?
No updates.
Excellent. Move to council updates. We'll start with Councilmember Roberts.
Just as far as the gentleman that spoke in the neighborhood, I think this is a bigger topic, and I've talked with staff about. I know what we're doing statute-wise as far as letting people know when there's projects, but somehow more outreach so that we can, we don't get the situation where, and I don't know what that looks like, signage in front of the project or some kind of an email database. In this situation, I know it was a one-off where they have this outlot, but there were 10 people that have that, that property needed to their, to their main lot. It seems like that should have been something that they should have been communicated to. And I know this is a one-off and probably rare, but I don't know if a workshop opportunity to talk about, maybe better communication that way and, and trying to get in the front end of these things instead of whenever project's done and then you have someone upset about not being notified. The only other thing is I've been working with the county staff in the chamber about possibly the idea of lighting the Hardwood Creek Bridge over Broadway. I think we're getting some traction there, and we're hoping to do that. That'd be at Christmas time over the holidays, similar to what they do to the bridge in Stillwater over, over the St. Croix River. And then last, looking forward to maybe seeing both chiefs participating in the Flock Community Night, where the police and fire play against softball against the Flock coaches. That's at Fenway Park. They've got food and beverages. Sounds like a good night. So, hopefully, the public can come out and support both organizations.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Valento?
Nothing for me.
Councilmember Husnick?
Yes, thank you. I did attend the EDA training session tonight. It was very good and very informative, and so we appreciate that. Also, I did attend the fly-in on Saturday morning in great weather. They had a great turnout. Everything kind of went by the numbers. So, it was a great day for the city of Forest Lake and a good way to showcase our airport, so. I have no other updates.
Councilmember Erickson?
Yeah, I would just echo. The fly-in was fantastic. I was able to be there on Saturday morning. And it was just well-attended. It was fun to see people of all ages and, you know, it was a good event. So, I'm glad we were able to pull that off and have the great weather for it.
Echo, comments have been previously made about the EDA meeting. Amanda, thank you for putting together the content. I think it was, we had a good discussion and always good to just kind of refresh on and kind of apply statute to what we're actually doing here within the city. So, it was a time very well spent, in my opinion. And then also just quick feedback, also attended the joint fire board meeting, had an opportunity to provide some input on some future budget items that are related to the fire budget that will kind of come before. We're looking at general fund budget, budgeting coming up with next week's meeting. I think it's our first round at looking at that. Good discussion as always with our partners in Columbus. Chief did a great job of kind of laying out just where we are from a budget perspective and giving us some good options going forward. So, it was a very productive meeting. That is the end of our planned agenda for this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn with just a note of next, our workshop on Monday is, I think, going to be mostly majority around budget presentation. I'm not sure we have any other topics for the night, and that will be a full discussion, I'm sure. So, look forward to a good, good working session. Entertain a motion for adjournment?
A motion to adjourn.
A second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.